Welcome to the November 14th meeting of the City of Davenport zoning board adjustment. The zoning board of adjustment holds public hearings to consider the strict application of zoning ordinance for hardship, variances, special uses, and appeals. I'm Dan Darland, Chairman of the Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustment. Members present today, from your left to right, are Mike Galliart, myself, and John Cloughman. Staff present today, Laura Berkeley, Scott Copes, and representing for legal is Brad Marshall. If you have a mobile device, please turn it off as it may interfere with the room's electronics. As we conduct our business, we expect that everyone will conduct themselves in respectful, courteous, and civil manner, and will speak only after being recognized by the Chair. The only exception to the standard is that staff is expected to interject when necessary to ensure we are properly conducting our business. If anyone wishes to speak on a particular agenda item, you will be provided an opportunity to do so. When recognized by me, please step to the podium, introduce yourself, and provide your input. It's important you come to the podium because this is all recorded, the microphone's directly above the podium. By practice, each person is only permitted one opportunity to speak. Exceptions to that practice is at my discretion. Of course, if a board member asks a question of anyone, they will be permitted to speak to answer that question if asked, but you keep your response limited to that specific question. All right. Are there any corrections to the minutes from our last meeting?
I see none, Mr. Chairman.
All right, hearing none. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
And second?
My second.
All in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. So our first order of business is a special use 24-06, but before we get to that, for the petitioner, there are only three board members present today. It's a board of five, we currently only have four members, so if you know of anybody that would like to join, but because we only have three, it's important that you know this, so I'm going to read verbatim. So there are only three members present of this five-member board. Approval of any motion requires the unanimous vote of all three members present today. Our bylaws grant the Chair the discretion to allow you a request of tabling of this hearing until a later date. Once a board hears your item, this opportunity to table will have passed. So what that is, for regardless of there's five, four, three of us, you have to have three to pass. Since there's only three of us here, it'd have to be unanimous. So you can table if you'd like to, and I've seen some recent communications that also allow for potentially some further discussion. If you decide to proceed, once we proceed, we're locked in, and if it's not successful, you can't bring it back to the board for a year unless there's a substantially different petition that you'd be bringing. So with that in mind, would you be interested in tabling, or would you like to proceed? And who's speaking on behalf?
We've got so many people here to support us.
We'd like to proceed.
Okay, then we shall. So the first item, the only item, is special use 24-06 of Jen's Baker on behalf of Mount Street Development at 1019 Mount Street for a special use for a purpose, or for, sorry, for a proposed third-floor reception facility. Table 17.08-1, the Davenport municipal code requires a special use for a reception facility in the C-V Village of East Davenport zoning district, this is in Ward 5. May I have the staff report, please?
Scott Copes, DNS, Department of Neighborhood Services. So this is a request to establish a reception facility, and as you stated, the code requires it for the use table. A little background on that is because certain uses need additional scrutiny in various districts. Not every district is capable of having every use, but they didn't want to preclude certain uses, so they required some uses to have special uses, and that's why we're here today. This proposed use is located on the third floor of 1019 Mount Street. There are three stairwells on the third floor and one elevator. The fire and building will complete their life safety review prior to occupancy, but I've been told they're not done yet, and there may be some issues there that are yet to be resolved. No private parking exists on this site except for there's three painted parallel parking spaces on the north side of the building, although a new hood vent kind of prevents use of one of those spaces, and another one seems to be taken up by a dumpster, so potentially one to three spaces available, but it wouldn't lend itself very readily to customers parking in that area. Additionally, that area is a joint access to the property to the north, and so if you park in the first parallel parking spot closest to the street, you essentially block access to all the other parking spaces for that building to the north. So this is the site, you're probably familiar with it. The city parking lot is directly south of the building, and this is facing east, and this is the front facade that faces Mount Street, the little stars on the third floor there, and this is where those three stalls are at. This is a little zoomed-in view, that's the new hood that got put up there. That is for the garden unit, there is a grilled cheese place in there, they were going to have a peony press, but apparently they went beyond that, and now they needed a hood, so they have a hood here. This is facing south from 11th Street, there is like a little alley, it's a private alley that winds its way through here, and you can just see part of that building. So this public parking lot that is next to the facility has 54 parking spaces. This lot is used by every business in the village, by the softball teams, by the people in the park, by people on the trail. It's a multi-use parking lot, and it's open to the public. This is just showing the property lines. So as you can see, the property lines are mostly right along where the building is, except for on the north, there's about eight-and-a-half feet wide between the building and the property line, and that access for that rural parking in here, that's right from this spot here, and that's where I talked about, there's a conflict with that parallel parking spot. This is the same thing kind of drawn in, you can see they've, I think this is a construction dumpster, there are regular dumpsters over here, and that's the little hood. And so the applicant has stated in their application that they were going to utilize the abutting public parking lot and the additional parking across River Drive near the water taxi, this green area here, there's 70 spaces in the green area, these two red areas are reserved for the yacht club. And again, this is a multi-use facility, there's the park, there's the trail, there's the water taxi, and all the customers using those facilities need to have parking in those locations. We did notify everyone within 200 feet of the subject property, there were 13 notices sent out. This has not been updated as of today, we did receive one comment, I believe it's in favor, that was emailed out to you today, and I have also distributed a paper copy to you, and legal staff has a copy. And so in a review of our standards, there's three standards that we review generally for special uses. The first one, the establishment, the maintenance, the operation of the proposed special use will not endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. The trip calculations, we asked our traffic division for some information to help us out on trip generation, and the numbers that they came up with is 2.0 to 2.5 persons per vehicle is customary for this type of use. So that came from the 10th edition, the trip manual, 2018. And so that would conservatively place the number of vehicles needed for parking around 100 to 120. Now if you do the upper capacity number of 649, that would increase the parking need to 325 spaces. The impact to the village, even from 100 to 120 vehicles, would have a significant detrimental impact to the businesses dwelling in the village. A lot of the villages require frequently turnover, they're patrons, so the people can park in front of their businesses or in the parking lot. There's also residences nearby. If all the parking is taken up in the public parking lot and in front of businesses, people are going to inevitably start parking in front of residential properties adjacent to the village. Staff believes there's strong evidence that supports the proposed use would, to a significant degree, have a detrimental impact on the businesses and patrons of the Village of East Davenport. Approval standard number one has not been met. Item number two, the proposed special use is compatible with the general land use of adjacent properties and other properties within the immediate vicinity. The plans for a 649-person capacity reception facility would very likely impact adjacent property owners, given the possible frequency and size of events at the facility, even if the typical occupancy was in the 250-person range. The Village of East Davenport was not designed with the modern car, nor were site features of these parking lots designed, constructed for modern cars. Approval standard number two has not been met. Number three, the special use in a specific location proposed is consistent with the spirit and intent of this ordinance and adopted land use policies. A reception facility in the village, as we stated, requires a special use specifically to address issues that would be a possible detriment to the character of the area and to the property owners and patrons of the area. The appeal of the reception facility, being 900 feet from the river, does not provide redress for impacted businesses that will not have customer bases due to negative externalities of 100 to 120 additional vehicles, or as many as 325 in the village. The proposed use is in contradiction to the stated purpose of the village, which is to preserve and enhance the smaller-scale historic character of the village. Approval of standard number three has not been met. And our findings, which support the analysis of the three preceding questions, we've talked to the building, the fire marshal, and the building official, and there is no effective way to limit the capacity beyond what is allowed by fire codes, which is 649 persons. The use will generate off-street parking demand anywhere from 120 to 325 parking spaces, depend on what figures you use and how large an event it might be. No private off-street parking exists on the proposed lot except for those three parallel parking spots, and we've addressed the issues with those. Number four, existing public parking lots are presently overburdened without adding additional demand to it, and we have provided a letter that states that there are issues in the village from the yacht club. The impact of the proposed use will contradict the stated purpose of the village's zoning district, which is to preserve and enhance the smaller-scale historic character of the village. And number six, the three approval standards, which I have just previously talked about, have not been met. Therefore, staff recommends the board adopt staff's findings and deny the proposed request, SU24-06, as approval standards have not been met, and just a reminder that the motion should be in the affirmative.
Okay. So are there any questions of the staff and board members?
Yes, Scott, when do you expect the life safety standards to be met? And what, I guess, what could be put onto that? Could it be restrictive to number of people, possibly?
So some of that is based off of when the petitioner's architect res submits plans. I did have a conversation with the fire marshal, and there is not a way to reduce or restrict the capacity just as a number, that wouldn't be something that would be enforceable. They're pretty strict about going strictly by what the building's code standards and fire code standards outline for their calculations per area.
And that's done by square foot and egress and...
Yep, it's done by square foot based off of the use of the room, and it's based off of whether there is an open floor, whether it is a restaurant, you can reduce based off of fixed furniture, things like that. So they, and then, so one of the big things that's at question right now is, at that level of capacity, additional bathrooms would be necessary, so there's still some things that would have to be worked through.
So they would either approve it or not approve it?
So the way the City of Davenport works is, we just, we provide comments back that they need to do certain things to meet our code. So we don't deny, we say that it doesn't meet our standards at this time.
Understand, thank you. Could you go back to, I think the title was about the property lines? Wasn't there a slide that...
There's another one.
Yes, that one. Now, the property, I guess it's just, would be west of the bank?
That's owned by Iowa American Water Company, and it's not actually something we can count as parking.
Could there be possibly arrangement with the city, or maybe even with the applicant, to utilize this property as parking?
That would be something the applicant could ask of Iowa.
The city would not be interested in looking into that? And the reason I ask is because I know I've been to the village on multiple occasions when they have an event, and parking is limited, right? But there's been, those events have had a lot, a lot of people there with parking all over the place, and I know whether they're legally or illegally parked, people have parked in that area, but...
So the city wouldn't do that agreement at this point?
Okay.
It would be something the applicant could discuss with Iowa American, and we can provide that contact information to the applicant so that they can have those conversations. I believe that there was a purpose for why the Iowa American bought that, I don't know exactly what it is, but...
Staff did advise the applicant when they submitted the application that parking would be an issue, and we let them know that we would want some additional information about that, and they submitted attachment A, which has nine questions that I've asked. And so that was their response to our request for more information on parking. They did not suggest that they would go to Iowa American to find out if they could park there. It was suggested by staff that they get permission from the city to use the public parking And then, the city also asked if they had a leased parking lot anywhere, that wasn't directly answered. The applicant did say, "It's further anticipated to utilize shuttle bus as needed for larger events if parking is a concern, as the owners own a shuttle bus for another business." However, a lot address or a location of a lot hasn't been provided, and the means and methods of how to provide that shuttle haven't been provided to staff.
Thank you.
John, any questions? Yeah, okay. Very good. So applicant, or whoever's representing the applicant, you can go ahead and step up to the podium, introduce yourself, and go ahead and present your request.
Sure. Go ahead. Hi, my name is Matt Schmidt, and I'm a partial owner with Jen's Baker, the petitioner's for this exception. So I'm assuming at this point, pretty free to speak to all this? Okay. So just to start, you know, we understand the calculation per fire code, it was never our intent, nor is it, will it ever be our intent, with what we're investing in the building to have 649 people in it. We understand that restriction, that there's, you know, the city has to be able to enforce that, and we respect that. And so that sent us down a little bit of a path of trying to figure out, okay, well, how are other places doing this? I mean, you know, and just a couple, what I would call comparables, you know, Stardust Reception Hall right here in downtown Davenport is approximately twice the footprint that our reception facility will be. I'm not aware of any parking directly adjacent to that reception hall. There is a city parking lot approximately three blocks away, but there is no parking, I mean, adjacent whatsoever. So that raises a question for us regarding what I would call consistent application of this. In terms of, in the village itself, we are right next to the Village Theater. The Village Theater has a long history of having actual concerts there, where people are shoulder-to-shoulder to watch things. So kind of in a response to item number two, where to protect the villages, you know, not be detracting from what the village is, that's been longstanding there. I would also add that 11th Street precinct, which also has a larger footprint than what we're proposing, also has live bands, where furniture is moved, it's been packed in there. I personally have been to both private parties and to live concert events there where it's packed. I think it only brings something to the village, and it's never been a hindrance from what I've seen. So a little bit of us trying to understand with that step, like, we feel like we're being held to a higher standard. So just a little bit there, and my understanding is, and this is through conversations with an alderman, that Davenport does not have a no-parking-required policy for businesses. So there isn't a specific policy per se that speaks to what our request is in that terms. It has more to do with the zoning of the village and what we're trying to consider doing in this project. In terms of the staff reports and the feedback that was gathered from the village, we feel strongly that that is not reflective of what the village actually feels. We've done a lot of groundwork, trying to talk with people and understanding what the village wants, and we feel strongly that it is fully behind us. I have not heard a detracting voice. I would also like to speak to the, what was inserted in there, which is an email from September that alludes to parking problems, but is related to the Quad Cities Marathon, which has thousands of people, thousands of runners, in addition to families and everything else, that I feel is borderline, how do I say this, a good example of what we're trying to do. And again, that was not a feedback that was received from the letter sent out, that was something dug back by the staff months ago during a large event, and it's not even the full correspondence. So it's a little hard for me to understand how that is being really taken as relevant when we don't even know what the full conversation was. So, and that's only what we were provided. And I guess I would just like to close with, you know, don't take my word for it, I would hope that you guys would talk with the people within the village. We received the staff report late on Tuesday. We knew that there was concerns, we're not going to pretend there wasn't, but we were actually very surprised by what the staff report came back at. Upon that, we reached out to the village, and we have received now 11, I think going on 12 to my understanding, votes of support that feel that this project not only would not be a hindrance to the village, but would actually help support the other businesses within it. And then I would just add that, again, take their word for it, don't take mine, but we are also open to other ideas regarding parking, whatever that may be, the shuttle, or looking at adjacent lots that we could lease, whatever it may be, we are open to those ideas. With that, I...
You want to speak, Tim? Yeah, I just wanted...
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Just to address my announcement...
Can you introduce yourself?
Yep. My name is Jen's Baker, again, part owner of the 1019 Mount Street developers. You know, again, a few things to really bring up is, our designers went through the building and identified a classification use for that as a dining or a assembly with tables and chairs, which has a 15 per square foot person, you know, occupancy rate, occupancy load factor. And based upon those numbers, that's where we came up with the 225, or 228, what was in our original. We were instructed by the city, the staff, to change that and to resubmit it, and that's where the higher number came in, for the 650. There is a classification for a use for an assembly with tables and chairs that can be moved, because there's a classification for fixed tables and chairs, and then there's a classification for movable tables and chairs, and that's the one we're going for. And we're, I think we're trying, they're trying to hold us to a different standard, a different use that we're not intending for that. So that's, you know, again, one thing that I think is very concerning. The second thing that I think is, what is being portrayed by staff as far as parking is being a detriment to the area, well then, you have several empty buildings right now, several buildings that are for sale. Mount Street, the mound building right there, if you were to open that back up and use that building, is that not a detriment to the parking? Bringing more people into the village, is that not a detriment to the parking then? Same as what this would be? Reopening the theater and getting people in the Village Theater, is that not a detriment as well, if you believe what they're saying about bringing in more parking? And so that's what we're trying to do, is bring in more people for not only the rest of these building owners and the rest of the facilities, but to support everything down there. And to limit us for this existing space that already had people coming and using this space and parking down here anyway, I think is not going to be a detriment, it's going to be helpful. And I think a lot of these peoples will get up and say something very similar to that. Thank you.
I do have a question for either you or Mr. Schmidt. Would there be objection to talking with Iowa American Water, or maybe that's more of a question for the Village of East Davenport Association?
No, we have...
To look into that for, to relieve some of that parking?
We have no problem with that, you know, in regard, I have, like I say, the shuttle bus for other businesses. What we totally do is, you go pick them up at their hotels, so they're parking at their hotels, you pick them up and bring them there. You're not adding to the parking area there. We've also heard from the bank right across the street that they'd be willing to, and more than willing to allow us to use that, their parking spaces for overflow nights and weekends and things. Because again, a lot of the time that this will be actually people coming in, is going to be off-hours for other things.
And for clarification on the bank across the street, when they saw the staff report, that's when they felt compelled to offer us their parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicants?
Can we submit those letters that we got from the...
Do you want to speak? Is this open to audience, or is it just...
Yeah, there'll be a time for...
Yeah, there'll be time for others to speak as well, yes.
So, I'm sorry to interject. If you want to submit the letters, you can, we can make copies, or you can submit them after the fact if you want.
Yeah, these are statements from 11 of the business owners directly within the 200-foot radius, where they're all in support.
All right, just go ahead and hand it to staff.
You already have copies?
All right, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the request? Go ahead and step up, introduce yourself.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Hi, I am Kim Wessel. I own two businesses in the Village of East Davenport, I own two buildings in the Village of East Davenport, I've had a presence in the village for 17 years. I'm also the president of the Village Business Association, and I'm the secretary of the Village Med Association. We were one of the businesses that did receive a letter a week ago, and we did not, we have been aware of this project for probably a year. I was involved initially on some of the pre-planning conceptual design, so my background is interior design, both commercial and residential, and have, I'm staying on topic, but knowing that space and what that space can accommodate, their number at 225 is maximum to hold a facility. So I do think they're right on target with what they're telling you they intend for that. for that space to occupy, but back to the village. So, we have known about this project for about a year. The Village of East Davenport, we have talked about this numerous, well, once it became public, for a while there it was conceptual and not public knowledge, but once it became public knowledge, at, at our annual meetings that we have in the village, we've discussed this project. In fact, we just met Tuesday prior to knowing about the report that was let out, and it was a resounding meeting of support for this project. We are thrilled at this concept. We, so I have, with the short notice, we have 11, we've given you at least 11 business owners. I have verbal messages that go beyond that. I don't believe I have a single negative village business that feels that this puts a hardship upon the village in any way. So, I do, I did speak with aldermen, so, and we are aware that to have a business in, in the city of Davenport, a parking lot is not required. You're not required to have your own parking spaces. The use of public parking in the village has, has been a challenge. We've addressed it with the city on numerous occasions, we've given them options to increase parking. We have, prior to the water company purchasing the, that parking lot behind there, we, we did have a conversation hoping that maybe the city would secure that lot and use it for public parking. There is a conversation that happened this morning, I'm aware of, where I was under the understanding that the water company will not be building on that, on that parking lot. So I do not have that confirmed, I just was privy to a conversation. So there is a possibility for that to be retained as parking. We also hold numerous events down in the village, so we feel that this project brings great energy to the village. Having a wedding venue or a large meeting or a celebration of life that could be had, that could happen there lets restaurants have the opportunity to cater, salons the opportunity to maybe host and help bridal parties. You know, when a venue after a wedding is held, there's some time in the middle where those occupants might need to go shopping or go grab some coffee. And then, once their event's over, we've got great businesses down there that they can stay in the village and, you know, enjoy the neighborhood. So, I also don't believe that this project is detrimental to the aesthetic of the building, of the village. That building has been in the village for a long time, there's nothing on the exterior that changes anything about the character of the neighborhood. All of the enhancements that are being done to that property do nothing but help us attract more business to the village, which would be our goal. And again, I do think the parking pop issue is an issue that we should look as an opportunity to work with the city to try to solve some of those problems. I do want to address Scott Clements' letter just really briefly too, because I am a Lindsay Park member. I use that parking lot all the time, I was, I understand what that conversation was. I don't believe that has any validity related to this project, to be honest. We all know as members that the first row of parking is available to us, the rest of that is public parking. There was a special request to use that lot for some other purposes related to that marathon. Also Scott's comment in there was about access to fuel tanks, those are filled weekdays, Tuesday. It's not when this venue would be in use for parking. So again, we don't feel that we have any, we, we know we have parking issues, everybody has parking issues, but we don't think it's anything that we can't overcome. So, we highly support this project. Had I been given a little more time, I think I probably would have been giving you 50 village support letters, so, anyway.
And, and I think it's been brought up a couple times about Scott Clements' letter, and we'll get into that in a little bit, but as regarding the, the fuel tank, I don't think it was an issue of the fuel company accessing the tank.
Sitting on the top of it.
People park on that grass mound there and park on top of the fuel tank, which is generally not a good idea.
Right. And we did, we have talked about the possibility that that lot has expansion possibilities as well, which do not really detract from the park per se. You know, it's a grassy area that's not mowed very often, so. So we do think that there are possibilities within the village to secure additional parking.
And the, yeah, and the, the fuel tank, that grass mound fuel tank could be guardrails off.
Yeah.
And I will say though, you're correct that on the east side, the front was reserved for the boaters and the rest of the parking lots, the public.
Yeah.
The west side, the entire parking lot's reserved, so.
Yeah. And we do move, when there's a big event, we'll push all of our members over to that side of the parking lot so we can even let them have some more spots, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Any questions?
I appreciate it.
All right. Okay. We're going to be in recess for a couple minutes. All right, is there anyone else in the audience that would wish to speak in favor? Come on down.
Hi, my name is Carrie Peterman. I own a property on 11th Street, as well as run a business out of that property. My main reason for being here today is I did attend the East Village Business Association meeting Tuesday night, and that's the first time I was aware that there might be a problem. I received a letter from the city about this, but in reading that letter, and I reread it today, to see, boy, did I just read that quickly, I still got, the second time reading it, that if you have any issues, contact us. Well, I didn't have any issues with this plan. I think it, I mean, I've invested a ton of money on my property in the village. I love the village. I think an event center like this is exactly what is going to enhance the village. I'm involved in the association with all the business owners, I can't think of one person that's running a business in the village that would oppose this idea. I, I, I think the event center is something that's going to enhance it tremendously.
Okay.
And really, like I said, I think a lot of people down there are investing a lot of time, a lot of money to make the village even better than it always has been, and this is only going to help towards that goal. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of?
Hello, I'm Caleb Stebbins. Sorry, don't look the greatest, this is short notice, but I own Rocket Resale, it's literally in 1019. It's right there in the front. I definitely would be for the banquet, the banquet center. If, if someone's going to tell me that I have an opportunity of, you know, 225 people to see the name of my business while they're walking in and possibly come back later, you know, that definitely, you know, thumbs up to that. Another thing is, I was also at the meeting on Tuesday, yeah, every single person there, you know, all supported. I, I don't see why anyone, and anyone wouldn't, just for the fact of bringing the eyes on these businesses that, you know, small businesses are struggling right now, and so it would be nice to get some, some more eyes on our shops. Also, an idea for parking, I don't know if anyone ever brought this up, but the gas station up on Jersey Ridge there, I think they, they've closed, they haven't been, you know, I don't know what's going on with that, with that property, but it would also be an idea of possibly somehow acquiring that and putting parking in there.
Sure.
And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in favor?
Hi.
Hello.
My name's Natalia Waliga, I have a business inside the 1019 mound building. I really just wanted to come up here and just kind of show our support to our landlords. They're really great guys, they've really done a lot for the building, they've done a lot for my business. I've been there for almost four years now, and it puts food on my kids' table, and it would be great to get some more flow in that building, some more people down there. People really love the village and it would be a great, I feel like, highlight to have something like that there. That's really all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? That might already be a record. Is there anyone like to speak opposed to the request? Okay. So with the comments made, applicant, do you have any final comments?
I would just like to end with, you know, we are open to ideas to, to make this work, right? You know, in the end, we want to contribute to the village, the last thing I want to do is take away from it. I was a patron at the village long before I was a business owner there. A lot of great memories there, and, and I think this group is, feels the same way. So, we're open to ideas. We got into this higher capacity through some circumstance and other things which I think skewed some things, but again, understanding that there are codes and there are things we have to follow, we are open to ideas to, to make this work and benefit the entire village.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just add to that again, I don't think this is the, the forum for fighting over building code issues or, you know, fire capacities and things like that, that will go under the building code review, or the building permit review, which will, you know, part of the process. You know, I, so, I think this is, should be more for, you know, will this type of use of this building be acceptable? You know, and then the, whatever the capacity is, the bathroom issues, the, you know, sprinkler system and everything, that will all be handled at the next step, you know, rather than, shouldn't be part of this decision process.
Yeah, I, I probably agree with two out of the three of those, the, the capacity issue then impacts the parking issue, which is why, is why it's in front of this board. But, but the bathrooms, sprinkler, yeah, I agree with those, that, that's not, that's not our business.
Thank you.
Okay. And I may give you another opportunity because I know I have a handful of questions I want to ask staff, so depending on those responses, I'll, I'll give you another opportunity for final comments before we go into our discussion. Okay. So, staff, questions and comments have been brought up about parking requirements, so the ordinance as it pertains to the village, as it pertains to downtown and different areas I know, and I also know many things have been brought in front of this board where there, there is off-street parking required. So the statement I heard earlier, that much I know isn't true, that there is no requirement for off-street parking, because I know there is. But how's a parking ordinance impact the village specifically against the, the comparison they made to downtown?
Sure. I can take that one. So they actually are correct, the, the downtown, like downtown and the Village of East Davenport are exempt from off-street parking requirements, which happens to be why a, a use like reception facility requires a special use, because you have a high traffic amount all at once in one specific area. So that is one of the considerations, and that is the board's prerogative, when they were reviewing the special use standards, to consider how off-street parking impacts the area. So, while yes, it is true that generally speaking, off-street parking is not required in the village, it is definitely a consideration for specific uses because they impact off-street parking and parking in the general area differently. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so, other areas of Davenport do require off-street parking.
Correct. And so that is, we have, we have a couple districts that don't. Downtown, the village, and then CT and C1 do not require off-street parking. You will see, if you look at our use matrix, a lot of uses, or more uses, require special use in those districts to, to add or provide us additional consideration for their review.
Okay. And then downtown has, is there two or three parking ramps?
Four.
Four?
Yeah, I believe there's four. And specific to the one reception facility that was mentioned, it was done before our new zoning code, did not require special use at the time.
Okay. And the three blocking, by the time you walk from this property on mound to, to the yacht club parking lot, you're, you're at the same two, three block, maybe a little bit shorter than three blocks, but not significantly different?
I would also be concerned with crossing River Drive-
Increased foot traffic.
Crossing the railroad.
People tend not to like to stop at those red lights. Okay. Another question I had, can you address the genesis of the letter from Scott Clements?
Yes. So, we reached out to the main staff person for the Riverfront Improvement Commission and asked her, when, when the applicant stated their intention was to use both the parking, both parking lots south of the, or, yeah.
It's south.
South. Yeah, I questioned myself for a second. South of the railroad tracks, we reached out to the, to the staff liaison for the Riverfront Improvement Commission to say, is this in fact all open and, and public parking? To the answer, which was no, it is not, and we've had a continuous complaints from the, the yacht club about access and, and parking issues in, in their lot.
So the letter wasn't to address this particular situation, but just to provide-
An example.
An example or, and a, I guess to contest the idea that both of those parking lots are available?
Correct.
Okay. Classification regarding occupancy of moving, movable tables versus fixed tables versus fixed walls and et cetera?
Occupancy calculations are provided by the architect. The architect said it was open floor assembly, they calculated the square footage per person incorrectly based off of open floor assembly. So if, if the architect comes back with different use of the area, that capacity would be reduced.
So it's that classification that the fire marshal takes into account to generate their capacity rating?
Yeah, so basically, building review said you're calculating it wrong.
Okay.
Based off of what was labeled.
So if they came back with a different classification, would that be a significant enough change to come in front of the board again?
I wouldn't know at this point.
Okay.
I also would like to state that we did provide a range of parking demand needs. So there's the upper level, which would be 300 something spaces, but even at a reduced level, there still could be a need for up to 120 vehicles, even at the reduced level.
Some comments, and this isn't a question for staff, but comments about resolving parking issues like at the bank, et cetera, and I saw the letter in here, I, I wish the letters were firsthand, but I realized time was an issue for that, but that's something we always have taken into consideration is, that's the owner today and that may not be the owner five years from now. And we have a lot with neighbors, just even residential property, like this neighbor said, they don't care, like, but they may not own the house five years from now, and that, so that's where we have to, you know, look more at the ordinance and have that be our guide. I took care of that.
Chairman, I would state that if they had something in writing, that would be something staff would take under consideration, but only if, if we had something in writing with the parameters associated with that shared parking.
Right. Right. Staff, do you know the capacity of the theater, the Village Theater?
No, I don't, but we could look into that.
And, and that's not being utilized right now?
I believe it's closed.
Okay. So, then the, I guess I- So then the, I guess I'll, I'll keep that for more of our discussion time, that comment. Same for 11th Street precinct. Do we know the capacity of that?
Not off the top of my head, but we could look that up.
Okay. That's something I had additional question wise before our discussion.
So this letter from Julia Munson from the bank, does that suffice for your letter of, it would have to be directed to the City of Davenport?
And it, it would have to, we haven't, we haven't reviewed this. It was just given to us.
Sure.
I haven't even read it. I'm, so I'm not entirely sure.
That's the case where it's not firsthand.
Yeah.
To us, to staff, and preferably it'd be a lease rather than just a statement, right? Even if it's a zero dollar lease, there'd be a contractual legal agreement to it, right?
Yeah. And then to the point that you, you raised concerns about that could go away in the future, they, they could look into and discuss recording that agreement, so at least stays with the property. That would be an option that they could pursue.
Right. Okay. John, anything? Okay. I'll take your answer. Okay. So because of that discussion, this is where I want to give you guys, again, an opportunity for final comments.
Yeah, just two things that kind of stood out to me was, you know, first of all, in regards to the classification, our designer originally did have that as a dining, as a moving table classification with the 15 square foot person. We were instructed that the only way to get into this meeting was to change that to the, the, the five, the open floor plan.
I think the issue is they don't, didn't show the design of the chairs and tables, and that's part of what you have to do. But I don't know for sure, but I think that was part of the conversation.
Right. They hatched it all off, identified that area as being a dining area.
Right.
So again, I mean, so it was, we were instructed that the only way to get in here for this meeting was, was to, to make that change. The second point is, is I agree with you. If we stick to reading the ordinances and, and really dive in into, to what that means, and the ordinance here says, you know, there's no requirement for off-street parking. You know, so again, I, I think that's a, a good point. Thank you.
And to follow up with the ordinance, because I don't think we're breaking a parking ordinance from my understanding. It is about the impact that it would have on the Village of East Davenport.
Correct.
And if we work, start working through those standards that we're not meeting per the city staff, it comes down to negative impact on the village, safety concerns, things of that nature. And again, we'll go back, and while the village might not be right now, I can tell you, I personally have been to multiple concerts at the village. So to paint a picture that we're breaking something that didn't pre-exist there, I refute that. That's really not accurate. 11th Street, they might have tables and chairs. They clear them. They have a stage built in there.
Right.
So again, I'll, I'll point at the standard, since I don't feel like we're not committing to an ordinance of type. But if you go to all those standards, you get the letters, and I will point out with the letters, we got the staff report at three o'clock on Tuesday.
That's, that's inaccurate. It was sent out on the November 6th.
It was sent previously. We've sent a reminder because we didn't have any response to it.
So I received something on the 6th, but I do not see the link to the staff report on there.
It was there.
And if I missed it, then I apologize, because trust me, I would have jumped on it on the 6th. I, I don't think that's true, but if it is, I will retract that, obviously. So, you know, again, I will point to, we're not breaking an ordinance. The reason we're not meeting the standards that are, have to do with the zoning and the special use permit, I feel like those standards aren't, today, we, we have the people of the village here, and I, I legit have not met a person in the village who's like, told us, like, we, we really don't want that there. And I would also say, to say that we're bringing in a use into the village that didn't pre-exist, I don't find that to be true either. So I would just like to make those points.
Okay. Appreciate it. All right. So that brings us to, to our discussion time. So initial thoughts?
Well, my opinion is I, I totally agree with that, that this venue would be beneficial to the village, for sure. I think the village has always had a parking issue with special events, and people are parking everywhere, including the Iowa American property as well. I, I, I tend to be in favor of this. However, parking is a concern. I would like to, I guess I would like to see maybe a commitment that to pursue with Iowa American water, to see if that can be utilized as, as parking and, and maybe also pursue the, an agreement with the bank. To, to me, my opinion is that both of those are sorely needed for the village as a whole. So that's kind of where I stand.
Thanks, Mike. John?
I want to kind of share your sentiments on that. And I think the spirit of the intent is to not do more harm. And just because the, the parking isn't a, an ordinance issue, there is the obvious concerns that that portrays. And I think doing a little bit of additional due diligence to help eliminate some of that moving forward can ease the, or lower the impact of the area, because that is, you know, I've, I've patronized that area a number of times in the past, and it is always a disaster to find a place to park. So I understand the intent. I understand the, the issues with that. But I agree that there needs to be just a little more due diligence there.
So that's where I'm at is, I only patronize the village quite often. I live very close to there. I live in the Fifth Ward, so I'm there a lot, and, and I'm a member of the, of the yacht club, and I have my boat in the marina, so I'm very familiar with all of this. And, you know, we're not looking at, in my opinion, you know, the rare occasion, the different events that take place there through the summer, the half dozen or so, that I usually don't think about until I see the barricades one block away. This could be very recurring every weekend, et cetera. Plans, further due diligence, the classification of the facility, there's a lot of things that I think are still left to be considered. So I'm in, I'm in favor of this overall. My opinion, and while we vote here in the minutes, I, I don't think we're there today. I, I think there's, I think there's things to be hashed out still. So, and, and parking is bad. Even in, in several people's support, speaking in favor of, they also acknowledge the parking issue. So right now, if the village isn't operational, and, and this becomes operational, and then the Village Theater, I meant to say, becomes operational, then it just adds to the parking issue. So there's, there's some things to, some things that still need to be considered. So my thoughts.
Can we make it a stipulation that if we get, if they, if the, the village or the, or they make a, you know, obtain a letter of agreement or some kind of agreement for parking?
But I don't know. We'd have to look how many parking spaces would be available and...
So it would be our recommendation, if you're saying you need more information, that you table it.
Yeah.
To, to give both staff and the applicant time to get you what you need.
Right. So earlier, you know, we gave the opportunity for the applicant to ask to be tabled, and how that process works, if you guys ask to be tabled, it still takes us, one of us to motion and then to approve a tabling. So where, where I'm at, where this would be coming from the applicant, the petitioner, but from, from a member of the board, that this be tabled prior to going to any sort of vote tonight to, to get through these further issues, whether it's parking, whether it's, whether it's the classification, which then impacts the occupancy, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I, I think there's, I think there's work to be done yet before we, before we move on this. So, so at that point, for the two of you, I would...
Point, point of order.
Sure.
If there should be a motion to table, just remember that there should be a date at which it comes off the table with that motion.
Yep. And the next meeting would be December 12th?
December 12th.
Right. Because we don't have the second one in November because of Thanksgiving.
Yep.
So December 12th. So from, from either of you to make motions, the second, I could, you could either make a motion to table to be heard then on a 12th December, or you could, you can make a motion for approval, in which case we'll proceed with a vote. So I would entertain either a motion.
Can we ask the applicant if that's, provides sufficient time to?
Yeah, I mean, it could be tabled to January as well, I guess, right? It wouldn't have to be the next meeting.
We would like to get to it in December.
Can you go ahead and say, yeah?
We would like to get to it in December, but obviously, even if we're talking about a contract potentially with the bank, I don't know that we can turn around that quick.
So what, what about this? What if you say, if you're going the tabling route, why don't you say December 12th? And if we don't have what we need, we can continue with?
Then staff would, yeah.
I just don't want to promise something that if we're trying to negotiate with somebody.
We could table the intent to here on the 12th of December pending...
So we'd probably still have the meeting, and we might have another application anyway. So I would say that you could then table it again if you need to.
Okay. All right.
I motion we table it till December 12th to give us time for receipt of additional information.
Okay.
I'll second.
Is that a roll call or a voice vote?
Do a roll call vote on that.
Okay. Gallier?
Yes.
Clefman?
Yes.
And Darland? Yes. All right. So we're, we're tabled. Keep communicating with staff. We'll look at it again December 12th if we're ready. If not, again, we can entertain another tabling and keep, keep pursuing the opportunity. All right. Appreciate it. There is no other new business, so I would take the motion to adjourn.
So moved? Second.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.